July 6th, meeting of Troy City. I am Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of this meeting. Please stand, we'll begin with the invocation by Mrs. Robin Oda, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Chairman and Father, we are so thankful for our country and blessed to have celebrated its birthday over the weekend, and we just are so thankful to be here. We are thankful for our democracy and our form of government that allows us to gather and make decisions, and as we gather here tonight to do that, Lord, we pray to give us wisdom, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Kendall? Mr. Clark?
Move to excuse Mr. Kendall from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mr. Kendall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall is excused.
Motion to excuse Mr. Clark.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to excuse Mr. Clark. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Clark is excused.
Tonight, we have a public hearing on Resolution R. 30, 2015. Mrs. Knight, please read that resolution.
Resolution adopting the budget of the City of Troy, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and declaring an emergency.
I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against the ordinance? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of June 15, 2015.
Minutes of Council, June 15, 2015. Committee reports, Personnel Committee reported recommending a new FSLA exempt position of concession food and beverage manager be established at the Hobart Arena. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared, increasing the authorization for the North Market Street-Picquet-Troy Road-Troy-Urbana Road realignment project. Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared, expressing the city's intent to negotiate with other cities on a one-price schedule under which street lighting services would be provided. Resolution number R. 29, 2015, authorizing the increased authorization for the roadway project was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O. 14, 2015, amending the salary ordinance, establishing the new position for the Hobart Arena, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O. 15, 2015, expressing city's intent to negotiate regarding street lighting, was given first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned 7:23 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt these minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll move on to committee reports. The first report is from the Buildings Committee and Chairperson, Mrs. Lynn Snee.
Thank you, Madam President. On June 29, this committee met to consider the recommendation from the Downtown Loan Committee, DLC, for council approval of a loan and the amount of $850,000 from the Downtown Building Repair Revolving Loan Fund, DBR, to Troy Community Works, TCW, for the purchase and renovation of the building at 1 through 3 East Main Street. This loan would be structured as a forgivable loan based on criteria that within five years the applicant is to rehab the building so that all three floors are ready for occupancy. If the criteria is not met, the loan will convert to a 3% 25-year loan. Disbursements to TCW would only be made as work is completed or contracts authorized and documentation presented to the city. Thus, while the loan would be allocated to TCW for 1 through 3 East Main Street in the amount of $850,000, it would not be paid out in a single lump sum. Based on new procedures of the state, if the city is not in a position to reduce loan fund balances by making loans to qualified applicants, Troy's loan funds have been categorized as stagnant and are becoming a target to be recaptured by the state of Ohio. While this loan, as any loan, may carry some risk of not being repaid to the city, TCW is a nonprofit community development corporation with a mission focus on rehabilitating buildings in downtown Troy. TCW would use the funds that would have been paid back to the city to see that other downtown buildings are likewise improved. TCW has a proven track record regarding improving a structure with DBR loan dollars and is a qualified applicant for the loan. It is the recommendation of this committee to support the recommendation of the Downtown Loan Committee, and we recommend that legislation be prepared to approve a loan to Troy Community Works as outlined in this detailed report for the purchase and renovation of the building at 1 through 3 East Main Street. We support emergency legislation so that the loan can be closed in a timely manner. We further note that the legislation will recognize that this loan does deviate from the DBR guidelines of a loan amount exceeding $100,000. This is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Oda, Mr. Phillips, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from Council on the report? You have anything further, Mrs. Snee?
Nothing further from our committee.
Thank you. The next report is from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bill Twist.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee members Swazer and myself met on June 29 to consider the recommendation forwarded from the Troy Planning Commission to approve the Record Plan for the Story Point Platte, which is the senior living facility to be located off Town Park Drive. As the Record Plan of the Story Point Platte conforms to the general plan, which was approved by council, and conforms to the final development plan approved by the Troy Planning Commission, it is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the Record Plan of the Story Point Platte. The developer has requested that three readings be suspended so that as much work as possible can be accomplished prior to the winter season, and we are supportive of that request. Respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, Bill Twist.
Are there any questions from Council on this report? Thank you, Mr. Twist. The next report is from the Finance Committee, in the absence of Chairman Kendall. Mr. Tremblay, can you supply that report, please?
Thank you, Madam President. On July 2, this committee met to consider two applications associated with the planned expansion of the Clopay Building Products Company Incorporated operation at 1400 West Main Street. One is an application for a loan of $250,000 for the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund for the purchase of new equipment. The loan will have a 10-year repayment schedule with a 3% simple interest. The second is an Enterprise Zone Agreement application for 100% of real and tangible personal property tax abatement for 15 years on the new capital investment of $30 million. The agreement includes Clopay increasing full-time employment by 205 jobs over a four-year period. There would be no abatement for the existing property. The investment would add a new production line and 200,000 square feet of production space to the existing 1 million square foot complex. The agreement would be with the Dayton-Montgomery County Port Authority, the owner of the building and the land, and Clopay Building Products Company Incorporated. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, subject to the approval of the Troy Board of Education, to approve the Enterprise Zone Agreement application of the Dayton-Montgomery County Port Authority and Clopay Building Products Company Incorporated as submitted related to the Clopay expansion at 1400 West Main Street. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve a loan in the amount of $250,000 from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund to Clopay Building Products Company Incorporated for the acquisition of equipment and based on the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee. So that Clopay can proceed with the expansion without delay, we recommend that both items be supported by council as an emergency measure. We are very appreciative that Troy has been selected as the site for the Clopay Expansion Project. This is respectfully submitted by John Swazer, Tom Kendall and myself, Tom Kendall being the Chairman.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. The next report is from the Recreation and Parks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Brock Heath.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee members Oda and Tremblay met on June 15 to consider the recommendation of the Board of Park Commissioners that a parcel of park land be declared as surplus and no longer needed for public purpose, and that that parcel be offered for sale. This parcel is a 1.092 acre tract, part of In Lot 10311, which is part of Stonebridge Park. We recommend that legislation be prepared declaring as surplus and not needed for public purpose the parcel which is requested by the Board of Park Commissioners. This has been submitted by Mrs. Oda, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from Council on this report? Thank you, Mr. Heath.
Thank you.
The last report this evening is from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee members Snee and myself met on June 15 to consider the recommendation from the Planning Commission for acceptance of the dedication of .098 acres of existing part of In Lot 9927 for additional right-of-way along South Stanfield Road and Commerce Center Boulevard. Having this right-of-way dedicated would permit the owner to improve the right-turn movement at this location. The improvement would be paid for by the developer/owner. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared accepting the dedication of the .098 acres of right-of-way of existing part of In Lot 9927, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from Council? Do any Council members have any further reports? We'll move on then to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Livingston is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing Seeing none then, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R. 30, 2015.
Resolution number R. 30, 2015, resolution adopting the budget of the City of Troy, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and declaring an emergency. This is the annual tax budget as prepared by the auditor, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council on the resolution?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mrs. Snee to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 31, 2015.
Resolution number R. 31, 2015, resolution approving the application of Troy Community Works for assistance from the Downtown Business Building Repair Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This was reported on this evening. It is associated with the purchase and rehab of the building at 1-3 East Main Street. The loan is the amount of $850,000, first reading.
Is there any questions or discussion from Council on the resolution?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 32, 2015.
Resolution number R. 32, 2015, resolution approving the Enterprise Zone Agreement 36-35 as submitted by the Dayton-Montgomery County Port Authority and Clopay Building Products, Inc., and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to execute the Enterprise Zone Agreement and related documents and declaring an emergency. This is for a total investment by the owner of $30 million and new job enhancement, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
First option. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 31, 2015.
Resolution number R. 31, 2015, resolution approving the application of Troy Community Works for assistance from the Downtown Business Building Repair Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This was reported on this evening. It is associated with the purchase and rehab of the building at 1-3 East Main Street. The loan is the amount of $850,000, first reading.
Is there any questions or discussion from Council on the resolution?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 32, 2015.
Resolution number R. 32, 2015, resolution approving the Enterprise Zone Agreement 36-35 as submitted by the Dayton-Montgomery County Port Authority and Clopay Building Products, Inc., and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to execute the Enterprise Zone Agreement and related documents and declaring an emergency. This is for a total investment by the owner of $30 million and new job enhancement, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
First option.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 17, 2015.
Ordinance number O. 17, 2015, ordinance accepting the dedication of a right-of-way. This will accept the dedication of 0.098 acres as reported on this evening, and this is the first reading.
Are there any comments from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 18, 2015.
Ordinance number O. 18, 2015, ordinance accepting the final Record Plan of the Story Point Platte Commercial Plan Development. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the senior living facility on Town Park Drive. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
For adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read our final ordinance of the evening, O. 19, 2015.
Ordinance number O. 19, 2015, ordinance declaring municipally-owned real property as no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such excess property. This has been recommended by the Board of Park Commissioners to sell a small parcel of Stonebridge Park. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
I do have a question, Madam President.
Mrs. Oda?
Were neighbors notified? Do we have to have a public hearing on this?
No, but they will be notified when the sale is forthcoming. That was a specific request of the Park Board that the neighboring, you know, the neighbors be notified of the availability of the land.
Okay, that's all we have.
Any other questions?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Twiss to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Oh, very briefly, thank you all for participating. Those of us who participated in the weekend activities, it was a wonderful time to celebrate. Since our last council meeting, we've had a lot of good things happen. We've got the Lincoln Train coming in September, and we just, that was sponsored by Troy Foundation. We've had Cincinnati Symphony here. We've had two army group, band groups, one and both sponsored by PDN and other organizations like the Troy Foundation and the City of Troy. It's just been a really wonderful opportunity to start the July off, and I want to thank everybody. We live in a great country, and we're allowed to do what we've been doing, and we live in a great community, too. Thank you.
Mr. Titterington, do you have any comments this evening?
I have nothing this evening, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stickell, do you have any comments?
Oh, thanks, Madam Chair. The City of Troy was recently presented the Auditor, Ohio Auditor of State Award, and it's awarded for exemplary financial reporting, and it includes a comment that the citizens you represent are well-served by your effective and accountable financial practices, so we're proud of it.
And there's a copy of that up here if someone wants to take a look at it. Mr. Livingston, do you have any comments this evening?
Excuse me, none this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Any comments from council this evening? Any questions or comments from city staff this evening? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments?
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Place Street, Troy, Ohio. I was just wondering if you could give me a figure or ballpark figure of how much we spent in the last two years on consultants?
Mr. Titterington?
No, I really don't have that number. It's probably available in our budget if you wish we can give them copies of, if you'd
Have we ever had a consultant go against what we wanted him to consult about?
I'd have to ask Mr. Connor if he can be a little more specific.
Well, just like with the last consultant that you had there for the firemen, and that was 21,300, I think, what was in the paper. I mean, I know when you hire somebody to do a consultant, just like we've seen car companies, pharmaceutical companies, they do their, pay for their own consultants, and it always comes out in the favor of the person that's paying the consultant. So, you know, I'm just wondering, why are we wasting so much money on consultants when we've got people that are here in Troy that have the intelligence to do some of this stuff and figure it out without having to hire a consultant all the time?
Madam Chair...
Mr. Titterington?
The, I think there is a big distinction between the type of consultants that we use and the ones that you're talking about, Mr. Connor. We have had a couple that I can think of that we have asked for specific recommendations as to which direction we should take as a philosophy regarding organization, regarding service levels, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Those consultants, their reports eventually come to the council, and the council ultimately decides either through the budget process or as a separate action, resolution, ordinance, whatever, as to whether or not they want to accept the consultant. Those are relatively few and far between. The fire study was one, and you have not seen, you've seen the recommendations, but you haven't seen anything as part of legislation. We continue to talk to the local union, work through the issues, see if there's some resolution before we come to the council with the recommendation. Another study that I can think of is the utility rate studies and the consolidation and the regionalization studies that are ongoing. We have absolutely no idea what they're going to come up with, and those would impact rates positively or negatively. If you'll recall, with the now infamous Pick with Troy Water Rate Study, that consultant actually had some fairly surprising beneficial, very low recommended rate increases for the water fund, even though we did not combine with them. The bulk of the studies, the consultants that we use are technical experts who are experts in a particular field, and we know what we want to do. We have the project in place, or we are close to asking for authorization to actually bid and construct the project, but these technical experts are uniquely qualified to tell us what the best, most efficient, most cost-effective way to complete the project, most notably when it comes to, well, engineers of all types, traffic engineers, utility engineers, that kind of thing. We do have two engineers on staff. We do a lot of the smaller projects in-house, but we get into some of the complex, multi-infrastrucure-related projects such as McCague Phase Two, such as North Market Street, such as the complete reconstruction of West Main Street that will be starting in the next few years. It is always the most cost-effective for us to use those. We could not dedicate the time, resources, the training, and hire somebody full-time to be able to do that kind of unique specialized work. That is what the bulk of the consultant budget has been in the past, and we anticipate will continue in the future. Thank you, Madam President.
Well, I know that the issue on the firemen of temporary help was a big issue, and I heard positive there's going to be a referendum on that. It looks to me like the City of Troy spent $21,000 to try to get the citizens to think, yo, we want to vote yes on this referendum. That's what it looks like to me.
Do you have anything further?
Pardon?
I said, do you have anything further this evening?
No, that's enough.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, members of council, good evening. My name's Bud Holliga, and I'm the Director of Human Resources for Clopay Building Products, and I'd just like to come up and thank you all for voting on our resolutions tonight. I think that's the right word. And I'd like to thank the council, thank the Troy Board, Troy Development Council, and the citizens of Troy for approving that. We're extremely happy to have our manufacturing facility here in Troy, and the Troy area provides us with a constant stream of talent from the robust school system and the outlying community. So on behalf of Clopay Building Products, thank you very much.
We also would like to thank you very much for being in the City of Troy. We're very happy to have you here, and we also appreciate you being at our meetings to discuss these issues and provide insight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that has any comments? We do have a number of leadership Troy people in the audience. If you would please stand. And then we'll start up here at the front and ask Catherine to provide us your name and address, or not your address, I'm sorry, your name. Hello, phone number, no. Your name and who on city, either council or in city staff that you're representing this month and...
I'm Catherine Hayes, the Director for Main Street, and I will be representing Chief